Prior to the donation, we've started to do some research so that we could better understand and gauge what things have happened along the way with the land. And so Ms. Cleo Mason-Hamilton owned the land for many, many years from his death. There were several things that occurred along the way, and I'm going to let Mr. Gus Garcia kind of walk you through some of the pre-donation things that we were able to observe. Mr. Garcia?
Thank you, Ms. Benavides. Gus Garcia, Managing Director for Development Services. As you can see from the slide, Ms. Hamilton, in January 14, 1985, Down North Development Company acquired the land from Ms. Cleo Mason-Hamilton for $970,050.24. That was by Mr. Donald Gay, who was representative for Down North Development. After he had it for two days, it was Talon Ventures who acquired the Hamilton property tract. Hamilton Property Tract purchased it in 1985 by, from Hamilton by the Family Development Corporation shortly thereafter. However, in 416, 1985, Talon Joint Ventures sold the Hamilton property tract to Family Development Corporation, where the Walnut Bend Platte was created, and we'll show you that platte here in a few minutes. So we wanted to show you a series of things that took place on that property. There were several developers who's, who acquired the property and exchanged hands, et cetera. On January 20th of 1986, the Family Development Corporation acquired the Hamilton property tract and received the new ordinance change. There was an ordinance that was number 1051, passed in January of 1986, and amended by ordinance number 1078 to include Exhibit B. In August of 1986, zone the property as a planned development for office and retail. So as you can see, in January 20th, 1986, it was rezoned, and a platte was added, which was called the Walnut Bend Platte. So you see that in a minute. So after that took place in 1987, the Family Development Corporation sold the Hamilton property tract to Bank Home Savings Association. They acquired that property. November 4th of 1987, Am West Savings Association purchases multiple properties from Bank Home Savings Association for a total of $6.6 million. The Hamilton tract is included in that sale. On 2/23/1993, Am West Savings Association sells the Hamilton property tract to Bob and Trudy Ladd.
So as we came along, what we've tried to kind of understand from a background standpoint, in April 2nd, 1980, we said Bob Ladd grants to the city the land with restrictions, 21.21 acres. Forty-two acres must be used for natural trails, botanical gardens, advancement of culture, ice rink, artistic, educational purposes. In 1999 to 2000, there was a master plan by the city to facilitate this development. The city actually paid and supported this effort. We also budgeted in that same year additional funding for infrastructure. Now, what was most interesting, as we'll talk some more about that, as we looked at the history of it, we discovered, in speaking to our former city manager, Mr. Kent Cagle today, is that this land was intended to be the home of the Dr. Pepper Star Center. On 3/23/1999, a letter of intent was signed by the city of Duncanville with also the group with the Dr. Pepper Star Center. In talking to him and looking at that, those decisions moved forward, and we went in a different direction. And as you know, it was relocated on the corner of I-67. On February, I'm sorry, on May 1st, 2009, the staff advertised an RFP for the development in May 2019. On 9/19/2019, the comprehensive plan also identified it as an opportunity area. 6/17/2021, council instructed city manager to instruct staff to identify the highest and best use. And on 9/7/2021, the Duncanville Economic Development Director presented the Ladd to council. The city currently maintains this property as open space. I think what's most important, though, in this is that rather than we talk about it, we'd like to go through, and we didn't want to go in details, and go back and capture what has happened from a city staff standpoint since we've arrived.
So vacant land that has what I call semi-identified uses. These are areas, these are properties that we don't have an area plan identified or that we don't have one established. What I mean by area plan, it's just a natural progression from our comp plan. Would have a more specific use or kind of an idea of what we potentially would use it for, that we could market it for. Identified nine pieces, nine parcels within the city. You can see them here listed. Here is a property identified often as the Ladd property or the Hamilton property. As you can see, the value right now for the appraisal district is $534,330. We don't have a identified or specified use. I know I have heard some recommendations, but we don't have a final decision on what we're going to do there. We're looking for developers to give us some idea, but this would also be a candidate for an area plan where we could have specific use that the council would want. We do have a lot of interest in this property, as well as the one I just identified, which I say is a Toyota property, although I don't know if that's the right name for it, but people are referring to as that. But this is the Ladd property or Hamilton property, depending on who you speak to. And this, I believe, is off of Daniel Dale Road.
First of all, Gus, let me, let me tell you, let me commend you for the information that I asked you to put on the, on your report today. Great job. I'm not going to bust a balloon because I think I asked you to put it on there for a reason. And the reason was for us as a council to look at it. So thank you very much. And Mayor's right, we hadn't looked at it from this standpoint, and that's the reason I asked for us to look at it.
The Ladd property, again, in May, council asked staff to look at all of the properties that we own and what were the highest and best uses for those properties. This is all part of that process as far as a special area plan. We did have some discussions with developers. We've had some discussion with people in the community. As you know, this property made the agenda for EDC when that took place. We talked to our board on the economic development, our Duncanville Community Economic Development Corporation, and some of those things have come up. So we have been discussing this particular property. The property in question is located on Daniel Dale and Santa Fe Trail. You're probably aware of it. It is the, is identified as the Ladd property. It's approximately 42 acres, .419 acres. And right now, that property is valued at $534,330 at the appraisal district. Now, back in 2019, the city did issue an RFP to developers to look at what the possibility was for developing it. And at that time, we did not receive any proposals from outside development, so it wasn't developed. Back in May, the council has instructed staff to go back and look and see what the highest and best uses are, as I mentioned a minute ago. So we do own some of the surrounding properties, as you can see in this area right here. So we have this area, which is adjacent to the Ladd property, and this property here as well. But this again is where it's located off of Daniel Dale.
And there are six acres that we, that are not given to us in that 42 acres internally?
That's correct, and I'm going to show you that in a minute in the survey. Now, of particular importance, you can see, since we do own this property here, and you have this, this green area, which is the Ten Mile Creek, you can see that this particular property could essentially be used for parking or it could be for staging or anything else that might, the city might want to use it for. This is why I highlighted it and identified it. It's an, it's adjacent to the Ladd property. So in 1998, Bob Ladd, which is previous owner, granted the property to the city on April 2nd, 1998, with some restrictions. 21.21 acres of the 42 acres must be used for natural trails, botanical gardens, advancement of culture and/or artistic and educational purposes. So we know that 21 acres is over 51%, over 50% because the language on the deed restriction says primarily for these uses. Now, primarily, obviously, you know, I guess, just could mean 51%. It could mean 70%, it could mean 80%. That's obviously up for the council to decide. The city currently maintains the property as an open space, as you're aware. The comprehensive plan identified the property as an opportunity area in 2017. It does state that a small area plan should be designed or should be developed for this particular property. It also states that we should take advantage of the creek and some of the, as an amenity to any future development that would take place. But it, it could be used for, obviously, the restrictions on the property and possibly residential, possibly commercial, and possibly open space being an amenity to the project. Again, the city advertised for the RFP in May of 2019, and as I mentioned, nothing came back. In June of 2021, council instructed city manager to instruct staff to identify highest and best uses for all of the city property that's happening, one of them. Yes, sir?
Could you explain what an RFP is?
Oh, request for proposal. So we sent out requests for proposals to the development community. We advertised as required, expecting developers to come back and see if they would be able to develop it.
There were zero responses?
There were zero responses, that's correct.
Obviously, you weren't here for that.
I was not.
Any speculation as to why? No response?
No, I couldn't tell you why.
There is a major gas line that runs underneath it, which precludes a lot of work in terms of developing that property. And a lot of, some of the feedback that we got at that time was, you've got 42 acres, and you're telling me I can't build out 20, 50% of it. And so developers were looking at the 42 acres as an opportunity area, but setting aside that 50%, this wasn't, they weren't happy about that. Was some of the feedback that we got, did agree?
Just quickly, is any of that property in a floodplain?
I'm going to address that, yes, sir.
Yeah, so that's another piece.
So this is the deed of gift, and of course, you can read the restrictions, and you can see where it says it's being granted to the city in April of 1998. So restrictions here on the deed specifically say that the subject property above described shall be used primarily for purposes of lay for promotion or advancement cultural, artistic, or educational objectives. Such uses may include libraries, museums, conference centers, or similar educational facilities, interactive learning centers, theaters for live performing arts, indoor ice rink, botanical gardens, and nature trails. That subject property above described shall be named or identified through signage or other appropriate display using or incorporating the words Charles Ladd or Charles F. Ladd. So these are the restrictions identified with the property, and they do pass on to any future developer. So if future owners come in, they'd have to follow these same restrictions.
Is there a time where any of that language might expire on the deed?
No, it's not. So it remains with the property. In fact, it specifically states it will remain with the property for any future purchases. So in regards to your question, this is the entire Ladd property. As you can see, there is a section that the previous owner did retain, which is on Big Stone, I believe, Santa Fe Trail. So he has a frontage, and this goes all the way up to Cedar Ridge, which is part of beginnings of our industrial property area.
What is the zoning of that property?
Public Plan Development.
The?
Oh, this one here? I don't know the answer to that question. I would think it would be, I think the whole project is under Plan Development, the whole problem.
PD.
Yeah, it's under PD. I had to be, I'll double check on that, but I'm pretty sure that's where it is.
Remember, Carl, it's about seven acres, isn't it? Somewhere around seven acres.
I don't have the exact amount, 7.676. So?
But still owned by the Ladds?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
So as you can see here, the area that's marked in red, that's the floodplain. That's the amount of property that's identified in the floodplain. It's approximately of the 42.49 acres, approximately 8.497 acres is in the floodplain and would not be able to be developed.
Now, let's be clear, the 42 acres we're referring to does not include the 7.6 acres still owned by the Ladds.
That's correct, that's correct.
Okay, so I'll make sure.
The area highlighted, oh, I should have identified that.
Good job.
So this is just a satellite overview, so you can get an aerial view of what is in the floodplain. Gives you an example to speak to the mayor's point earlier. As a developer, a portion would be in the floodplain, and of course, you could only use a certain percentage for actual development. Some of the challenges with the property is access to this back area. What could you use it for? So is there enough access? And would the, and would the current access be able to handle a lot of road traffic or vehicular traffic? What could you use it for if you decide to develop that particular property? And what burdens would it put on these properties as well as the existing infrastructure that's in place? And so as you can see, the creek obviously extends before and after. Again, there's parking space, well, not parking space, the property that we do own that's adjacent to the, to the creek. So I would consider that just the use, you know, for something for the Ladd property. The frontage obviously is the most valuable portion. So back in 2017, an appraisal was done. And so the market value appraisal at the time, as I mentioned earlier, the de-cap value was 534,000, currently is today. But back in 2017, the market value was $3.5 million for the full 42 acres. To speak to the mayor's point earlier, if you're going to purchase the entire property for 3.5 and only be able, if they were to use it for commercial or residential services development, it'd be a bit of a challenge. It may not pencil, it may not be financially viable as a property. That could have been one of the reasons why we didn't get any proposals. At the time, all of these restrictions were pointed out in the RFP. So that could have been a deterrent for future development if it doesn't work. This is just an example of the executive summary of the appraisal. This is just zooming in on it, this is where it's $3.5 million as is. So these are the opportunity areas. Obviously, the comprehensive plan has the Ladd property identified here. And there was 10 opportunity areas throughout the city that the Ladd property was one of them. So this?
Gus, before, yeah, before you move on, on the comprehensive plan to our left there, are those green, are those parks, those green spaces there?
Yes.
Okay. And so we don't have any down in that, that area where the Ladd property is?
Uh, I want to say you have a linear park here in this area, but I'm not sure. That's just adhesion that's utilized as?
That's our line of adhesion.
Oh, line of adhesion, okay.
It's not a park.
So we have, we have no park or green space in that general area?
It's a good point. So this was a Ladd property master plan that was identified that I found in the file. So as you can see here, this was just a rendering that, I'm not sure who did it at the time. It was the Talon Development Corporation, I guess. And so they tried to do a rendering or potential land use plan where they identified several different parts of that. I just put this as an illustration to give you an idea. If it were to be developed, you know, residential, commercial, these are some of the spaces that would be available. As you can see, there would be no use in here. There's nothing really being developed along this floodzone area, but this would be potential. What I've also done is we've had a discussion on small area plans to give you an idea of some of the types of small area plans that could be utilized. So some of the, I go back here, I identified mixed-use residential, green space, recreational, adventure, park, or event space are some of the ideas that could be used from a master plan perspective. So some of the ideas that came up or other cities have utilized are outdoor adventure park, where they land, they plan the property to bring people to the area, enjoy the property. You could have a natural garden here. You could have, obviously, some park space for the community, some walking bridges, some adventure, maybe some zip lines, and utilize the property that way. There's area plans, various examples of retail, multifamily, and green space. This could obviously be an area plan for the site as well. Retail with event space and sports fields could be utilized. Just some more area plans, but I guess the reason why I wanted to put this up was you see an area plan, it's going to really drill down to show you what the property's going to look like from not just a bird's eye view, but actually a actual view of some of the buildings that might be in there. That would be included in an area plan. But it goes down to even the smallest detail on what each particular item is. You know what the city wants, what the community wants, so there's some consistency, and there's also the ability to know what you're going to put in there and what's allowed. And of course, you'd have all the drawings and renderings and?
Well, actually, I was going to, I'm not sure of the protocol here, but is, is this something we could workshop as a council?
Well, I was looking at the time as well. I don't know how much further we've got to go because we need to, we need to be out there.
More specific to the Ladd property, I'd like to talk about.
We can do this again at the workshop as well.
So let me finish up here. So where do, where do we implement? So first of all, council authorized city manager to direct staff to begin drafting concept of area plans and identified areas. Staff prepares the project logistics, background research, site analysis, design guidelines, compliance with pre-existing plans. Present three area plan mockups to community and be a town hall meeting for feedback. That could be one, two, or even three town hall meetings to talk about possibly three, three plans for presentation. Decide on area plan at a city council hearing. Now, that body could be council participation, EDC board participation, the community participation in designing or presenting that. And then implement, the entire process can be expected to take an estimated six to eight months. The estimated cost for standard smart area plan is about $80,000. But as I mentioned, we think we can do it for cheaper, but just to be conservative. And we have budgeted $50,000 in the DCEDC budget. And so one thing I do want to point out is right now, currently, Public Works has applied for a blue-green area application area down by the Field House and Waterview Park. This is for a grant that they're currently, and Parks Rec, sorry, I apologize. Possible funding for that through the cog. And so one thing that I did see is that you have the Ladd property, you actually have a natural greenbelt that would attach the Ladd property all for future development and planning all the way to Harrington Park. So I think that should be something from a global perspective. If the Ladd property were to be utilized, you'd want to look at that from a larger global, you know, higher viewpoint. And I identified, do you eventually want to create some sort of linear element for a natural greenbelt through the city for the 20, 30-year plan? And what would you do and how would you utilize it? To be able to connect Harrington Park to the Ladd property and create walking trails, et cetera, et cetera. But you want to draw people to this community, to the park. So with that, I'll end the presentation.
So Mayor and Council, we wanted to bring this to you just because we wanted to recap our discussions with you as the staff. And our, our purpose of this was to highlight that we have been focusing and wanted to make this into a community process as presented at the end. And we talked about bringing back plans and getting the community involved in town hall. And Mr. Garcia, in his discussion, also highlighted the green space and the importance of that green space and building on it. And so from this presentation, I just wanted to share with you to recap how we got here because part of our discussion was what things could you do? But also recognizing, as you, council also recognized, is there are many limitations tied to this property, and there's a natural beauty in which we want to capture and also maintain. As we look at it and talk about, one of the things that we wanted to make sure we pointed out in it in the existing deed language, a deed, it transfers to whomever owns it, whether it's the city or if we sold this land, it would also. The property, as he mentioned, is subject to be used for cultural, artistic, educational objectives. And can include things like a library, a museum, conference center, educational facilities, interactive learning centers, theaters for live performing arts, indoor ice rinks, botanical gardens, nature trails. Those are specific. And so these are the languages in which we must look toward. And so that was part of the gift. And we underline ice rink because as we talked to the city manager, as I mentioned earlier, that was the concept that was developed at the time of the transfer. This is also the Dallas Stars Letter of Intent that was signed on March 23rd, 1999. The city self-construed this to operate a two-sheet, two-sheet, I'm sorry, I can't speak today, recreational ice center facility at this site. The exact location, as you will see, is that site. And so that was the plan, and that's where the master plan came from with the donation of that property. Now?
So Mayor and Council, as you can see here, this was the master plan that was, this was the master plan that was designed by HKS. This was contracted by the city of Duncanville to provide a site as part of the letter of intent. And monies were expended on these, as well as other plans that were suggested before the council. As you know, the ice rink ended up going to Main Street and 67, but this was some of the things that took place during that, during that process back in 1999. So we wanted to put that on there, so as you could see, some of the things that took place or transpired in that process.
Ultimately, as you can imagine, we did not move forward with that. And so one of the questions that has come up often is what's happened since then? I can't answer that, and I don't believe any of us were here on the council at the time. But the person who could answer that, which was Mr. Kent Cagle, said, "We looked at it, but we also saw just what you saw as council, and you've shared with me, is that this site is very difficult to develop." We also have talked, and he said, about different types of opportunities. And we listened to the residents back then, as we've listened now, and the residents were not interested in any of the developments that we had. And so we had other priorities, and so that is why the land has not been developed through this time. So just the final part of our, our section in here is what has happened since we've come on board? And I'll let him talk about their meeting.
Yes, as council's aware, we presented before the council in May, shortly after I was instructed by Ms. Aretha Benavides to present before the council the properties that we have. Two of the properties that we presented before council were the property located on 609 Daniel Dale Road, which you know as the Ladd property, and 730 East Interstate 20, which is the Toyota, formerly Toyota property, Alexander property. So on June 28th, I presented before my board what I had discussed before this council. On July 26th, the DCEDC had a meeting, and of course, we discussed the Ladd property once again. And what this was is updating my, my board on the discussions I'm having with the council and the city manager. So I put that on the executive session without going into details on what was discussed. That's what was on executive session item. On September 27th, again, we discussed property and real estate matters regarding city-owned properties and uses. So this was a comprehensive discussion regarding city properties and uses within the city of Duncanville. And since September 21st through March of 2022, there have been no discussions at the DCEDC board regarding the Ladd property. As you know, we've been waiting direction from the council.
Mr. Kenneth Govan, who's here as part of the chairman, just to talk about what the DEC, what the board?
Good evening, City Council, Kenneth Govan, Chairman of the Board of the Duncanville Community and Economic Development Corporation. I wanted to come to you tonight to actually express what we actually talked about in our meetings. We have, we talked about in regards to the different properties that this DCEDC owns. As far as the Ladd property, no discussion has been brought to us in regards to any kind of development ideas or development projects for that property. To be honest with you, there was, there were some other projects that we've actually done a lot of attention to in regards to a lot of the vacant properties and shopping centers that are here in Duncanville that we want to redevelop. As you said before, the Alexander, formerly the Toyota property. But the Ladd property was not something that we've actually discussed in, in any kind of way in regards to that. And we, we were presenting information in regards to the deed restrictions in regards to, but that's all that was actually discussed in any of our meetings.
So we wanted to just kind of follow up a little bit more on our responsibilities and what's happened in the past also. We have budgeted funds for this, and we've looked at this from a number of, as we went through the budget in 1998, 1999. I'll let him talk about this.
So when we went through the history of the property, we wanted to know exactly what transpired over the years. And I know the intent of the deed restrictions was something that was extremely important to this board, so we decided to put some of this before you. And that's when we discovered about the Star Center and some of the plats that were developed in the past. And so what we did find is in the budget book of 1998, 1999, which was the year after it was acquired, one of the goals and objectives for the DCEDC was to secure land planner for the Charles Ladd Business Park. So that speaks to the intent of the donation by Mr. Ladd on the property. Next line, do you have the remote? Oh, so in 1999 through 2000, again, what we did is we looked at the insert within the budget. You can see there from page 154, again, the goals and objectives were to target development areas, master plan, and market the Charles Ladd Business Park is how it was identified as a goal. Now, one of the things that we did look for was to see if monies were expended. We didn't see anything in the budget summary that year, but we kept going further because we wanted to make sure we understood what the intent was. So we actually went to the 2000, 2001 budget book. And what we did identify was approximately $268,000 for quality-of-life projects. But that's all we had was around a large number, and that, of course, met our curiosity, and we wanted to look further into it. And yet, the budget book didn't have what we needed, and this was back in 2000, so it was hard to obtain information. So through an exhaustive search of some of our, many of our boxes, we were able to locate an ordinance that was passed back in 2000, 2021 that talked about some of the quality-of-life projects. As you can see there, and what we did find in the budget book was actuals that were spent. And you can see that approximately $17,291 was spent for the Ladd property master plan, which is what you have seen before you. And so that was identified in the budget book. And if you look further, you can see the next column that was adopted in 1999, 90, was Ladd property infrastructure of approximately $300,000 was budgeted. And that was for the master plan for the Dallas Star Center, and I think the next page has it. This is the ordinance that was passed, ordinance number 16666, passed by city council August 30th of 2000. And you can see there, if we go back, the 268, 265, which shows the $17,291. So we were able to identify that ordinance. That's how we were able to tie the two back together as they were passed, and the detail was presented. So we were able to get the, the detail from that. This was just the plan ordinance or PD that was approved in January 20th of 1986. This is where they changed the ordinance of 1051 to ordinance 1078, which basically gave a planned development authority for office and retail back then. And this is immediately after the land, or right before the land was acquired. Next line. And so this is just the comprehensive plan opportunity eight. As you can see, this was adopted at 9/17 of 2019. And these were the six things that were identified in the comprehensive plan. Number one, develop a small area plan, perform a zoning ordinance to diagnostic and update ordinances as necessary, subdivide and zone the parcel as a PD, which was done. And then number four, I'll point you to, it says, "Work with developers to identify an appropriate amount and density of residential development." Five, take advantage of the creek as development, as a development amenity. And four, explore convenience, retail, and office, which can serve local workforce as an area residential. So that's some of the things we looked at. As you can see, this was the RFP that was issued, and you can see? And you can see through the introduction, the city of Duncanville is looking for interested parties with innovative ideas for the use and development of government owned property located in Duncanville, Texas. The city will entertain a land sale at fair market value and consider using a chapter 380 agreement toward the highest and best use of the property for a mixed use and residential development within a, with a recreational component. And I put that in there because I wanted to make sure that the council understood what was, what transpired in 2019 when no proposals were received. This is just the appraisal opinion. As we mentioned earlier, you saw that for the 3.5 million. And these are the multiple plats and studies that were done on the property through the term of our ownership of the property. You can see there is a master plan, site plan that you can see that was done by the talent development corporation. And that has all the mixed use development along with the creek and some trees. And this is just showing the flood plains and parking studies. Excellent. Again, this is just the lad property and some of the things you've already seen. And this was a rendering, color rendering of the actual plat that was designed. That shows the mixed use retail, et cetera. In 1996, 1998, I believe.
So as we close, upon unfortunately, last year at the, after the loss of Mr. Fredrickson, I received a, I received his emails and within his emails, he was approached by a developer who had been communicating with him about an interest in the lad property. When I received the email, I informed him of his passing and then directed Mr. Garcia to find out what's going on and a little bit more about the property. We were not as familiar with it. And speaking with them, we followed up with the developer and asked them and shared with them some of the deed restrictions and what we were looking at. That is the only developer which we have spoke to at any time regarding this property. It is also a developer who spoke to us and we did share with them our interest in protecting and creating a, a an environmental friendly development with very limited development. And so based on that, we ended all conversations probably early last year with the developer because based on the feedback we received, we needed to talk to the community to see. So at this time, this is the conclusion of our background on what we have done as staff.
Thank you, City Manager and Mr. Garcia. I've made several significant notes as we've gone through this, as you have gone through this. And I think the key takeaway is number one, thank you for the extensive amount of research that's been done to provide to us and to the city. The citizens that are here tonight. It's educational, it's informative. And what it serves to do, I believe, is a key takeaway in terms of the summation of what we received is that if we were to take it and just consolidate this into one very brief statement. And I'll go back, I quoted you, Aretha Pharoah Benavides. He said, you want to nat the cap, the natural beauty we want to capture and maintain is your statement. And I believe, City Manager, what you are conveying in that statement, which I quoted is the intent of this council as well. Because there is nothing on the books. There is no documentation. There is no evidence in the recorded productions of what was done in our briefing sessions and at our city council sessions as presented here in these videos that will disclose that there's any plans for development of this property. Any information to being disseminated throughout our community to the contrary, that is disinformation. Now, taking that further and understanding where we are today, we understand that this history and in terms of what is desired by this council, we're going to be discussing tonight. And what's being desired by our citizens as well as what's going to be discussed later on in our agenda. So thank you very much for that information and passing this on to us. It's key again, if I may reiterate, but you have said, I think two or three times is that in the planned development of this, which goes back to the actual deed restrictions entitled to us, there were buildings actually intended for this property, not for commercial purposes, but for cultural aspects, museums, libraries and so forth. So any, any construction that would go on, on this property would not be for commercial use. It would be for cultural art and educational use as given to us by the labs in this particular deed. So there again, any information being communicated in terms of commercial use of this property again, is not accurate. This is what we need to take away in terms of the facts of what's going on with this property. So as of this evening, as we pursue this particular situation and we enjoy seeing our council, our citizens here tonight, we're going to be discussing what are the possible future uses of this land? And as we proceed forward. Now, citizens, if you will note on the agenda that we are now going to go into executive session because we need to get some advice from our city attorney on how we proceed on item number five on our agenda. So with that, I'm going to recess our city council meeting. And the timestamp is on that is 6:41. Now citizens, I cannot tell you exactly how much time we're going to be spending in executive session. So if you please be patient, bear with us. This is a very, very important issue that we'll be discussing as evidenced by your attendance here tonight. Thank you very much. We are recessed at 6:41. Open part of our city council meeting is 7:07. Moving on to item number four of our, of our agenda, citizens input. Pursuant to section 551.007 of the Texas Government Code, any member of the public has the opportunity to address the city council concerning any matter of public business or any posted agenda item. However, the act prohibits the city council from deliberating any issues not on the public agenda. And such non-agenda issues may be referred to city staff for research and any future action. All persons addressing are subject to council adopted rules and limitations permitted by law. At this time, two minute comments will be taken from the audience on any topic. And to address the council, please submit a fully completed request card, which I have in front of me here. The city secretary will time your inputs made verbally to a two minute timeframe. In accordance with this Texas Open Meetings Act, the city council cannot discuss issues raised or make any decisions at this time. And issues may be referred to city staff for research and possible future action. Pursuant to city practice, citizen comments and reports during election season, March 1st to May 7th and during a runoff election period are not broadcast or recorded and Zoom will be for streaming only. Moving on to item number, number five, presentation by city secretary concerning the confirmation of a petition filed on February 28th, 2022 for an initiative pursuant to article nine, recall initiative and referendum, section nine dash 13. Initiative, the Duncanville Home Rule Charter concerning real property purported to be at 609 List Daniel Dale Road, Duncanville, Texas. Mayor and I'm going to turn this over to our city attorney, Mr. Robert Hager.
Thank you. Mayor and council is kind of a prelude. I want to, I'm now going to read you the law with regard to this item. And so that you understand the context of which Ms. Downs, you still can't hear me? This is a bad mic then maybe. Understand the context of, and now I have a series of questions to ask her. And at the end of that, I will tell you what the legal conclusion of that is and give you my legal opinion regarding the validity of the petition. From then, you may take up agenda item, the following agenda item number six or not, depending on what that conclusion is as a result of my legal advice and reading to you the law with regard and her review of the petition. Mr. Hamby, if you go to the first slide. On the, I believe it was February 28th, we received a petition which included a letter from Mr. Jones and the signature of what purported to be 1,837 citizens as contained in that petition. It was left for her. She is then obligated under the law then to review that petition and then make the report that she will make to you tonight based on the legal advice and how this unfolds under your home rule charter. 9.13 is the initiative provision. And it says the qualified voters of the city may initiate legislation. One, and I'm going to kind of break this down into eight sections, what this ordinance is because then that'll lead me to ask eight questions and city secretary as we move on. One, submit a petition addressed to the council. Two, the submission of the proposed ordinance, in this case, to a vote of the qualified voters of the city. Three, that said petition must be signed by 50% of the total number of votes cast in the last contested mayoral election. Four, a copy of the petition shall have attached to it, a copy of the proposed legislation. Five, the petition shall be signed in the same manner as a recall petitions are signed as provided in this article. Six, shall be verified by oath in the manner and form provided for recall petitions in this article. Then it goes on to say, seven, once that is done, it becomes the duty, which means it's mandatory of the council within 10 days after the receipt of this report tonight to pass or adopt an ordinance without alteration as to meaning or effect in the, in the opinion of the persons filing the petition or to call a special election to be held on the next uniform election date. Now, first of all, the uniform election date with, this is a requirement of your charter. And that's under section 41 of the Texas Election Code. And I'm going to read you section 41 of the Texas election. Except as otherwise provided in this subchapter, each general or special election in this state shall be held on one of the following dates. The first Saturday in May in odd number of years or the first Saturday in May in even number of years for an election held by a political subdivision other than a county or order by the governor or on the first Tuesday after the first Monday in November. So a special election.
Excuse me, do we have the right, do we have the right chart up here?
No, I'm reading that to you. It's not up on the screen.
Okay, thank you, sir.
So that's the state law. And so the state law says that we have to call this election in accordance with the state election code. It's written in your home rule charter. I just read to you the charter provision. That election under the state election code must be called 78 days prior to the date of the election. That is February the 18th, 2022 for the May election. So any election that's ordered as a result of this petition must be held in November because the state law requires it to be held in November and your charter requires it to be held in November. Next, we must look to the petition to see what the requirements are. As it says in 913, a copy of the petition shall have attached to it, the proposed legislation. The petition shall be signed in the same manner as a recall petitions are signed as provided in this article. Next slide. 9.02 says, and this is petitions for recall signed, remember, signed in the same manner as recall petitions. Any qualified voter of the city may make and file with the city secretary a petition. Then you go to number five because two, three and four have to do with recall. Each signer of a recall petition shall sign his name in ink or indelible pencil, shall print his name, shall furnish his voter registration certificate number, his residential address and shall state the day, month and year his signature was affect affixed to the recall petition. In this case, it's an initiative petition. So those are the requirements of 9.02, which is the recall for any signer has to sign in the same manner as they have to sign this initiative petition. Then you go to 903, next slide. It goes on to say the form of the recall petition. So now we talk about the form of the petition that was presented to us. The petition mentioned above, which is the recall petition, must be addressed to the council and must distinctly and specifically point out the ground upon which such petition is or petition is predicated. So that there has to be a clear identification of what the subject matter is. Since it's not a recall of an elected official, then it's the initiative measure in this case. It goes on to say, if there are more than one ground, they have to state those grounds. Again, that has to do with the recall of a mayor or one of the council members. I don't think it's applicable in this case, but there has to be a clear delineation of what the petition, what the subject matter is. Next, the signature shall be verified by oath under the following form. And then sets forth what us lawyers would call a notary jurat that the person signing or presenting the petition would basically say that on their oath that this petition, what the subject matter is, again, the initiative provision and has to state, I solemnly swear that the same as a genuine signature of the persons whose name it purports to be subscribed to. So this notary jurat has to be either for all the signatures or there has to be whoever circulated the petition has to sign such an affidavit that these signatures were signed in person before the person submitting the petition. Unfortunately for y'all, I've had to litigate that before for the city. And what happens, so you understand the judge, if there's no verification, throws out those signature pages in which there is no verification. That, that's the consequence of, of that. 9.05, next slide. Is that within five days after the date of filing of the papers constituting the petition, the person performing the duties of the city secretary shall present such petition to the council. Then we go to 904, the next slide. The petition may consist of one or more copies or subscription list circulated separately and the signatures thereon may be upon the paper or papers containing the form of the petition or other papers attached there too, which means it doesn't have to be one continuous long piece of paper being various parts of the petition, more than one page. The verifications shall provide for in the next proceeding section of this article may be made by one or more petitioners. So whoever the circulators of that petition were, need to sign the affidavit that they circulated the petition, that the person signed the petition, signed it in their presence and for the purposes recited therein. But no signature to such petition shall remain effective or be counted which were placed there on more than 180 days prior to the filing of such petition or the petitions with the person who's performing the duties of the city secretary. So that's a recantation of state law that any signature that's over 180 days old should not be counted. Now, I'm going to go back to the election code. And the election code has little information with regard to petitions such as initiative or referendum. But there are some guideposts that they provide in the election code concerning the, whose responsibility it is to verify and what the person verifying that petition should do. And it states in what I call the, pretty much the Bible that was written by Anna Leslie Muncy, who was a former city attorney in Dallas. That the duty of determining whether a signature contains the appropriate number of valid signature belongs to the city secretary. So that's in keeping with your home rule charter and keeping what happened in this case. How does the city secretary perform her job? She looks at whether or not she can verify a statistic sample, which means she doesn't look at every line of every signature, but does basically a spot check. This is generally done in cities like Dallas, Fort Worth, San Antonio, Austin, Houston. If there was a petition circulated, maybe thousands of signatures. And so they do a statistic sampling of those signatures. Is the handwriting of the signer the writing of the person whose name appears next to that entry? So for example, if it said Robert E. Hager and I signed it Bob Hager, now a question now may become the city secretary has to interpret whether or not that's the same person. now a question now may become the city secretary has to interpret whether or not that's the same person. Uh, that's another reason why the verification is required is so that the person who makes their mark or their signature is the persons who whose name appears next to that and gives it a presumption of validity, a prima facia, uh, validation of that signature. Are there any false signatures? Uh, in other words, people didn't sign their name appropriately or someone signed for and on behalf of someone else. Verifying the registration, remember I read to you, it said that, uh, the person signing are qualified voters. Uh, the case law in state of Texas is qualified voter, same as a registered voter. So the city secretary could take the names of everyone who was on the petition, check it against the registration list. Um, and then therefore determine whether or not those persons lived in the city and were registered voters. If they're not registered voters, their names are stricken. Uh, cause it says only people that are qualified voters of the city, i.e. registered. The effective date of the registration, did she use a current list? Did she use an old list? What list did she use is important. Whether or not a voter has been suspended from the list for some reason, termination is made. Other matters can also be considered is did they use ditto marks, abbreviations that didn't identify where that person resided. One, because we need to determine whether they live in the city. Two, we need to see if they're on the voter registration list. And if you start doing things like leaving ditto's or not leaving your address in, you leave it to interpret whether, uh, she can validate that signature and that person on the list. Uh, admission, uh, omission of zip code is not considered. And I believe I instructed her that if someone left their zip code off, I don't think that that's important, but we need their address. Uh, the voter registration number, this petition, I believe, did not contain any voter registration numbers. Uh, there is some case law that says if I have your address and your correct name and your correct signature, I do not need your voter registration number. I can verify it from the voter registration list. Uh, the date of birth and residence of the address are provided. This is sometimes important when people are have juniors, seniors, thirds, fourths uh, of who is the person that's actually the registered voter. I may have a registered voter for Robert Hager, but not for Robert Hager Junior, Robert Hager the third. And and I'm proud to announce there is neither a junior or a third. And finally, to determine if there's any other material defects, the form of the signature, the printing of the name, the voter registration number, the residential address, and the date of the signing. And finally, the circulator's affidavit. I'm gonna read you a case that was decided by the Fifth Circuit Court of Appeals, of which we are happily, uh, reside in, and it has to do with the signing of a verified petition or the lack thereof in calling or in this, in this case was, uh, someone's place on the ballot. And so the same rules apply, the same rules apply as to verification, the requirement of verification. And the case is Geiger versus, uh, Debusk, chairman of the Dallas Democratic Party. A person was trying to get on the ballot. They were left off. And they were left off because they did not provide a verified petition for them to be on the ballot. Uh, they tried to correct it. Uh, there was no affidavit, uh, that was, uh, accompanied the petition and a lawsuit, uh, ensued as a result, uh, claiming that they were sought a place on the ballot. We've had a similar case here in Duncanville about twenty-five years ago involving a recall petition where, uh, that petition was passed around town to recall member of the city council. The council, um, I unfortunately was involved in that. Uh, you were advised that the petition was not valid. You not called the election. We were sued. Fourteenth Judicial District Court of Dallas, Texas, the Honorable John Marshall presiding. Uh, he found that the verification on approximately half the petitions, there was at least a verification affidavit was, uh, executed before signatures. He now only threw out the signatures that occurred after the date. He threw out the whole affidavit. That whole page, uh, not knowing whether those persons and whoever, and I remember his comment, he goes, whoever signed the verification is gonna have a lot of trouble with the judge. And the person was in the courtroom. They ended up being held in contempt and were held by the judge for the rest of the afternoon until we finished with the proceeding. So it is an important, uh, element in in this process, but I I diverted some of my attention to why I'm here. Uh, the statute we are concerned with and and I'm reading from the case. So instead of the statute, we're talking about the charter provision is plain and explicit in its provisions that each part of the petition shall be attached an affidavit of the person who circulated stating that he called each such signature attention to the statement and read it to them before the signer affixed his signature to the petition and further stating that he witnessed the affixing of such signature that the correct date of the signing is shown on the petition and that to best of his knowledge and belief, each signature is genuine signature of the person whose name is signed. A petition so verified is prima facia evidence that the signatures are genuine and that the person signing it are registered voters. And the specific intent of the legislature, in this case, our framers of our home rule charter, that there shall be no requirement for the administering of an oath to any person signing a petition under the provisions of this section. That's the quote from the court. And so what it does is it demonstrates to the court that those are valid signatures. And unless there's some overriding reason, the city secretary should accept that signature of the affiant as a verification. That's why it's called a verified petition. A person who proceeds under this alternate method of placing his name upon the ballot by paying his filing fee must submit a petition supported by a sworn statement in the form of the affidavit setting forth the items. So the intent, uh, in this case was had to do with being placed on the ballot. But I I'm reading this opinion to you as what the intent of the verification is. We hold that these clear and specific directions, both as to the content of the instrument and the fact that it must be verified are clearly mandatory, not directory. Consequently, we must strictly comply with these mandatory provisions. And in this case, they held that because the verification did not accompany the petition, that the relief to be placed on the ballot was denied. And so it is my opinion that that is the legal framework for which I'm going to now ask the city secretary to go through this process after she has reviewed the petition. Bear with me. All right, Ms. Down. Did you on February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two, receive a letter regarding the Charles F. Ladd Nature Center and Preserve?
Yes.
And was attached to that purported signatures of citizens of the city?
Yes.
And what was there attached to that set of petitions, a proposed ordinance?
No.
Was the petition that you reviewed, did any of the pages contain a verification as provided for in the home rule charter under Article nine?
No.
How many signatures were required to be, uh, affixed to this petition in order to meet the fifty percent requirement?
One thousand thirty-one.
Did you meet with me on the March first, twenty twenty-two to discuss what your duties were?
Yes.
Did I instruct you to get a current copy of the voter registration records for the city of Duncanville from the county?
Yes.
Did you do that?
Yes.
Did you go through the process of che- checking each signature? Or did you do a verification by statistical sample?
I checked every line.
Did you check the handwriting of the signers?
Yes.
Did you check for false signature?
Yes.
Did you, uh, verify the registration of the, based on the current voter registration rolls and of the petition that was presented to you?
Yes.
Did you give the effective date of the registration by the date?
Yes.
Did you go through to make sure that there were no ditto marks or abbreviations or other way to check the verification of the address or the signer?
Yes.
Did you strike any, um, signers because of the failure to provide a zip code?
No.
Mayor and counsel, as a result of the answers from the city secretary in her review, based on the law that I have read to you, it is my opinion that your petition does not meet the requirements of your home rule charter that would require you to pass an ordinance since none was attached or to call a special election for November of twenty twenty-two, which is the first available uniform date based on the petition that was presented to the city secretary on February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Based on your review of law, which was comprehensive, succinct, and we understand the strict compliance necessary as a result of what you've read to us and the city secretary's response to those questions and your legal determination as a result of this examination of petition in accordance with law, that the petition is invalid.
Yes.
Thank you very much for that opinion, sir. That therefore obviates item number six on our agenda. I'm sorry, uh, Mr. Cooks, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I do have questions for the city attorney. City attorney, were you able to look after the city secretary has reported her information? That you actually look at those signatures or those denied signatures as well?
Yes, we went over, uh, we took a once she got the registration, I met with her for over two hours and I instructed her based on the law and based on what I read to you today, how did we to make that review? And and because it's her duty, not mine. My job is to give her legal advice. I gave her that legal advice. She conducted the review.
After she conducted the review, then you looked, you complied that she followed your direction. I understand you asked to the question, but were you able to look at that she followed the direction that you provided to her?
Yes.
And I understand that you mentioned that we did not have, she did not have to do the eight hundred one thousand eight hundred, eight hundred and thirty-seven, but she could spot, but you said she did them all with it?
I, and I'm prepared to ask her, a- as a result of your examination, how many signatures were you able to verify?
I verified one thousand and seven signatures.
That is not enough. Uh, you would need one thousand thirty-one, I think, based on the number that she gave me, which was two thousand sixty-one. So you have to have fifty percent and you can't have a half, so it has to be over fifty percent in that case. So that's why the thirty-one.
Right, that goes with my questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Seeing no more questions from counsel, we will move on to I'm sorry, Mr. Cooks, yes, please.
I'm sorry. I I do wanna make just a general comment, uh, I guess as we look at this, uh, petition not being, uh, valid at this point, I do wanna commend citizens that completed and took their time out to sign this petition. And as I know, we'll talk about this further, but I want to commend at this point, citizens, the one thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven citizens that signed this petition. Uh, I know that your hard work and your voice has definitely been heard by your signatures. Uh, and I share as we, as we discuss more, your voice is still being heard. So thank you very much.
So continuing on, item number six is unnecessary to be discussed and deliberated as a result of the petition being invalid. Citizens, please do not despair. Please sit tight. Be with us as we go on to item number seven. Item number seven.
A mere question for you, sir, I'm sorry. And I should have this question for you or the city attorney. Do we have to, at this point, five, do we have to to make a motion to accept this, uh, as an invalid petition?
That would be fine. That would be fine.
I know it's fine, but is it necessary that we do it or not?
Uh, given the point that it might be litigated because ones in the past have been, I would ask that you accept the determination of the city secretary regarding the petition of February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two.
So with that statement, Mr. Cooks, would Mr. Hager's statement be valid or acceptable to you as a motion?
Uh, yes, that's the most, yes.
Then would there be a second to that motion? There'd be a second by Mr. Contreras. City council, please vote. Understand, I'm sorry, Mr. Veracruz.
So can you explain the voting? We're voting to accept or not accept?
We are voting to accept.
Her report.
Her report.
Denying the petition.
Which denies the petition. Okay? So we're voting to accept the report denying the petition. City council, please vote. The motion is unanimously accepted. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cooks for get clarification. Mr. Craris, Contreras, I see your light on. Did you have? Okay, very good. Okay. So as I, uh, have attempted to start, uh, as a result of the motion and the discussion and the validation or the invalidation of a petition uh, that is not necessary to discuss item number six, we are going on to item number seven. I'm turning that over to our city manager, Ms. Aretha Faro Benavides.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Let me, let me read that just for the record, please. Deliberate and discuss options concerning the use, designation and or ownership of the property located at six zero nine West Daniel Dale Road, Duncanville, Texas, and or provide direction to city manager and or city attorney regarding said property. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, our staff has spent some time, uh, for the past year examining and listening to counsel and listening to what we've heard. And so what we have developed are some recommendations and feedback on our next steps in moving forward. And basically, we've identified a number of steps, uh, or options for the council. Number one, our first option proposed use is to donate the property to an educational organization with the intent to facilitate and fulfill the intent of the deed restrictions. Uh, as it's been identified, there is a desire and there are individuals who are more adept to manage this and help us to move forward. Our second potential recommendation is to donate the property to a nonprofit or foundation with the intent to facilitate and fulfill the intent of the deed restrictions. The third is, as we start looking at it from an internal standpoint, is to establish an enterprise fund for operation and maintenance of the property, which is also tied to number four, to hold a bond election to support the enterprise fund created for the development and maintenance of the property to facilitate and fulfill the intent of the deed restrictions. The last and final option, uh, would be to take no action, however, to establish a moratorium on development specifically geared toward this development or this property. Uh, part of the reason that we've said this is that these are options that we look at that will help us, uh, not only to ensure that the wish of council is under addressed, but also focusing on our residents. The last part that I wanna tie to each of these is that our second part of the proposal is that we establish or council establish a lead property committee. You can call it what you want. This would be a committee of individuals of residents who would come together as our residents have to help council to make a decision based on the information on the examples we provided or come up with other recommendations. Uh, we are recommending, uh, that each council member would appoint one member to serve on this committee. And this community group would come together with the supportive staff as far as providing them information to help us to go through and decide how we can move forward and and reach to the needs and what we want to do. And so these are the recommendations we have, but we are open and interested in other feedback that council may have. But we did recommend as we start to deliberate this with the timeframe is that the council would establish and and bring our community engagement back together to come up with a plan to move forward with this property.
Thank you. I want to make a comment, if I may, please. To all the citizens, the seventeen hundred plus individuals that signed that petition, regardless of its validity, it stands as a document and evidence to us as a council that the voice of our citizens must be heard. And regardless of the legal interpretation and application, I speak for myself and I will allow the other council members to speak for themselves. I don't want to assume their position. I believe we, I, as mayor of this city, will ask the rest of this council to move forward with your wishes. So that is my position and I will now open it up to council members to say what they wish to say. Now, before doing that, I, I'd like to make some more comments because I can. So your, your time and your effort and your money spent are not in vain. Your dedication to this mission that you have called upon yourselves to serve is commendable. I am proud of every one of you that undertook in this endeavor. I want to give you something that I thought of back in two thousand eighteen when Mr. Paul Frederickson was our interim city manager, Mr. uh, Hugman, our previous city manager had resigned in, in June and we then were on the embarkation of identifying our new city manager. I had an occasion to go to the city of Addison for a meeting and I got there a little early, not knowing how bad the traffic was going to be. And I got there somewhat early enough and I found a place to park and, and set aside and it was a park. It was an open space in the middle of the city of Addison. And I got out of my vehicle and I walked around. I took time and I thought to myself, this isn't so bad. I just wonder if that big piece of property we've got, if that forty-two acres could be used for something like this in our city. And I came back and I talked to Paul and I said, Paul, what do you think? Could we actually take that property and just make it a big park or make it something and leave it like it is? I didn't know the right names for it. I didn't know the proper nomenclature for it. All I knew was if it can be done in Addison and we have this land sitting there here in Duncanville, why not make it something like Addison? And Paul said, it's really not a bad idea. He says, my son actually has an apartment not far from there. I've never forgotten that conversation. I've never forgotten that thought as well. Next thing I would like to add is a couple of weeks ago, when we did the cleanup of the property, I and my wife had occasion to spend a lot of time with a particular individual who is part of your constituency, part of your activity and a strong proponent of what you're here for tonight. I'm precluded from identifying that individual because we don't do that by city charter. But that individual is here tonight. And what that individual imparted to us was an immense amount of education regarding this property. Its wildlife, its beauty, its gem, as has been characterized by city manager here. And not only for its physical beauty, but what it allows individuals to do for their mental capacity, their enjoyment and so forth. Now, I had a lot of questions for this individual because I do. That's just the way I am. It's my DNA. So I said, okay, so what can we do? Let, let's say, okay, here's this forty-two acres and we're going to take all this forty-two acres and we're going to leave it like it is, but can we put a, what, what, what could make it more attractive to our citizens? What's, what amenities could we add? Could we put a playground here? Could we put a pavilion here? Um, what could we do with it? And the response was, no. You don't do anything to it. And I said, okay, how come? And the response was any impervious structure or any impervious, um, what do I want to call it? Anything like concrete, let's just call it, anything concrete laid down on this land would cause its destruction because of erosion. I'm getting educated by this individual, right? And everything this individual said to me sunk home and I, that's my, that's my ten minutes, isn't it? Everybody's got to play by the rules, folks. Uh, I will conclude by saying that everything that individual imparted to me, I could not disagree with. And what it affected was, is that you don't put anything. I, we even talked about a parking lot. I said, if it becomes so, so enjoyable, you know, hundreds of people are going to come here. How do we construct a parking lot? You can't put down concrete. Well, this individual had some ideas and I'm sure that as we move forward, this individual is going to, could be able to contribute that. So I got to shut up. Uh, but I, I hope you understand where I'm coming from. Uh, let's see, I show, uh, Mr. Kuntz, I believe. Yes, sir.
I appreciate you saying that, Mayor, because I, I know.
Move closer to your mic.
We've had discussions. I appreciate you, uh, making those statements and, um, you know, what we as a council and citizens have to recognize that we do, uh, a- all of us get information and we're doing our very best to, to make the best decisions possible for this community based on the information we get. And a lot of us get information from different sources at different times. And I've been fortunate to ha- have some of those conversations that the mayor's had. But I believe what we can show that, you know, when we have the information that we need, that we can be, uh, take a position and make a decision, um, based on what we know is right and based on, um, that, that information that was given to us and that we have the rights to, to change our minds if, if, if we've learned something new and we can change our position. Uh, and I think that's an honorable thing to do. So I, I, I've got other comments, Mayor, but I'm going to hold those off.
Thank you, Mr. McNabb.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. And some of you may or may not know this story, but probably twenty years ago, my dad and I went to Kent Cagle talking about making this a natural thing. And that's something that still has stayed with me for all this time. The issue was at that time and it comes up similar again for what's doing is how, how do you make this a viable deal? I will, I will tell you that it's something that we'd still like to see. It's obvious which, you know, with your efforts and, and that line that, that we are going to move towards that direction. I, I'm happy to, to see it. Um, I hope that everybody has a good understanding of what's happened and, and I hope there's an agreement to work forward with this as well. Thank you.
Mr. Contreras.
Thank you. I'm glad to see the city managers, uh, proposed uses here. That's really beneficial to us. And, um, I'm mostly glad because, um, in the midst of finding out that, um, your efforts with the, um, with this validation, um, didn't come through. That happens sometimes. Um, but we have to go by the letter of the law. But during that short period, I had, uh, thought to myself that, um, of the few points I wanted to make and, and she's made some of those here. So I mean, we hadn't had any previous conversations. So I'm appreciate the work you've done in helping us prepare for, uh, what's ahead. Government moves slow. So, um, although it took you a long time to get here to this point, um, I want to do everything I can to facilitate moving this along quickly with the other council members. I, I especially liked what Mr. Jones said tonight when he, uh, talked about, um, meeting with us. And that's before these proposals came up. And I think that's a, a good direction um, for us to meet with representatives as though, and I'm going to use the D word, as though we were meeting with developers or meeting with somebody that brought a proposal to us with details. It's something that we could start a first round of meetings with, um, come up with more questions that we may have and more, um, recommendations and get to the bottom line of what it's going to take to have this relationship and have this project come true. Um, also, Ms. Browning, uh, mentioned something that hit, hit on something I was, uh, thinking about as well. And that was, uh, her words were, uh, was, um, to have a, um, some kind of an agreement in perpetuity. And, and that document, as I understand it, is a conservation agreement. And while government works slowly with y'all to move in the direction of finally obtaining your goal, I, I would recommend that the council entertain the idea of entering into that agreement because what it's going to do in perpetuity is lock this property in to where it can't be used for anything else. I'll, I'll close by saying that if I'm wrong on where I'm headed with that, uh, conservation agreement, uh, Mr. Attorney, could you correct me or explain that a little bit more?
It would be an element of five, uh, that you'd basically do a conservation easement, put it on the property during the penancy of these negotiations. And then once we decide, once you decide, uh, what you want to do with the property, then it would, it would maybe morph into something else. If there's a foundation or organization, uh, then you remove the, the conservation easement at that time and then either deed it to someone else or if you keep it in perpetuity, uh, if we, be my recommendation to counsel, if you even considered one or two, that you further deed restrict the property.
Thank you.
Because you can do that so that there's no building on it except for whatever you think, you know, like a, a pavilion with a, with no concrete and just a, a natural floor, that kind of thing that would be appropriate.
Thank you.
Going in the order, I see that, uh, individuals have requested to speak. Uh, next, Mr. Cooks, then Mr. Kuntz, then Mr. Veracruz.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. You know, I'll start off by saying I've had a, I have a, have a, had a wonderful mother who I listened to many, many times and had to listen to. I have a choice. And I had three, I have three sisters who I had to listen to because I don't have a choice. I'm a baby, I'm a baby boy. I had to listen to them. So I, I came up growing, listening to, uh, those important people in my life. As I think about the citizens of Duncanville, I'm also listening to what we hear this, what we hear today. Your voice is important. Also have to put on for the safe of our citizens. Well, let me back up one real, really quick. I love the, I love the nature part of our, of, of the city, of, of lab property. I had an opportunity, I just talked about those three people, had an opportunity to go to Enchanted Rock in Austin uh, and Cross Mountain where I hiked up, uh, to, to the cross. And as I prepared to hike down from the cross, uh, I tripped on gravel and broke my ankle. And as I was breaking my ankle, at that point, my, my friend Karen started helping me hobble back, hobble back down the, the, the mountain. And then another lady came up and said, can I help? And then I had two ladies shoulder by shoulder helping me come back down the mountain. Another lady came by and she said, can I help? And she said, well, and she said, told my girlfriend at that point, let's pick him up. And she said, no, we will not. However, they picked me up and took me back down the mountain. But I guess I wanted to share with you that before I went up that, there was a sign that says liability, go up at your own risk. And I did. A year later, I'm still recovering from that angle, it ain't gonna break. But it's out of my pocket. So I say that now I've put my banker hat on and to help, how do I, how do we help still protect our citizens? So I would propose still that we still, as we talk about this, that we really need to find out what other liabilities through count through our city attorney, through, uh, talking to our staff, that we keep our citizens safe as we go through this portal liability. That's my banker hat and I always have to keep that banker hat on. I'm sorry. Uh, I would also think is we, if we don't have some other communication, I think that's number six. Uh, six or seven, can you switch to that to the manager? We talked about forming a group. I don't think we just stop and say we'll leave it like it is. I think we still, oh, keep that open communication. And that means that we still form a group of seven and we still keep that communication open. Uh, each one of us appoint a person to keep this conversation going. Because if we do not and staff or council goes in a different direction, this group can help us stay it, stay that path. And one of the most important things to me is that liability piece with that banker hat on as I look out for the citizens of Duncanville.
Uh, thank you. Uh, Mr. Kuntz, if I may, can I go to Mr. Veracruz? Because you've already spoken and I'll give Mr. Veracruz, then we can go back to you. Is that acceptable, Mr. Kuntz? Okay, thank you, Mr. Veracruz.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, first of all, thank the city manager and her staff for getting that report ready and all these wonderful recommendations. And I look forward to partnering with our community and, and letting you decide best, best use of this, uh, this property. And, um, I just want to thank you for coming out and supporting us. I know it, it seemed awkward and it really did. But, but we really do appreciate the input. I mean, we've got to have it. That's how we make our decisions. So, thank you.
Mr. Kuntz, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, ju- just for clarification, um, because we were looking at the deed, we were talking about that twenty-one point twenty-one acres, right? Is that, a- and I believe on, on the presentation we had before, it said that twenty-one point twenty-one acres must be used for these purposes. That, that's, that's not the language of the deed, right?
City manager, respond to that, please, or city attorney.
Actual, you have the deed with you?
Yeah, I, I thought it was in the negative so that you couldn't develop any more or forty percent of the property had to be dedicated for that purpose. So we can look at it again. Is it, I think it says mayor and council. It just says primarily used for, and so we came up and did, in working with Ms. James, who was, uh, Gus's predecessor, primarily to me means at least fifty percent of the property. That's how.
Is that, is that a legal term or is that an interpretation?
That's an interpretation.
Okay.
It says primarily and, and that's always the scary thing for, is it the primary property or should the forty-two acres primarily be limited to those restrictions? If you consider this, any transfer, I would assume that would be intent of the body to further restrict the property so it remains in its natural state without any construction on it except for environmentally appropriate for a preserve, no concrete.
Can I correct something, sir? Unfortunately, the first part of it says that subject property above shall be professionally master planned prior to the use of development, whatever use it is. The subject property above shall be used primarily, shall, for purposes related to the promotion of the advancement of cultural, artistic or educational objectives. Such uses may include libraries, museums, conference centers, similar educational facilities, interactive learning centers, theaters for live performing arts, ice streams, botanical gardens and nature trail. And it also says that the name should be affixed to it. So it is, nothing is demanded as far as the amount and it does not actually say the amount. It says a larger portion of it.
So, um, it, it says the subject, uh, the property shall be used, uh, primarily for purposes related to the promotion or advancement of cultural, artistic and educational objectives. So that is what the property shall be used primarily for. And then it goes on. And then it goes on to, these are suggestions, right? It may be used for these, such uses may include.
Examples.
Okay. Possibilities to, okay, because the reason why I bring this up is because from the petition, what we've heard and I appreciate the council supporting the, the statements that have been made, but from petition, it sounds like the citizens are wanting us to designate this entire property as a nature preserve. And we have, the council has the power to, to make that designation, right, or to add those further restrictions on the property?
Council's the steward of the property and they can do with it as they desire within the bounds of the restrictions that are placed on. So to answer your question, yes, they could designate the whole property as a preserve.
Well, I'd like to make the motion, like to make the motion to direct either, I'm not sure, the city manager or our city attorney to draft an ordinance that would have such an effect.
The petition said something about perpetuity. If you pass an ordinance declaring this property in perpetuity, the council that's elected in May could revoke that or repeal that ordinance. So I think that there's a way to do this to accomplish that goal. And that is to either, here's, here's a fiction that lawyers use called straw man. And what you do is you give it to a straw man and then they inter, put the deed restricted on it and give it back to us. And by doing that, now we take the property with the restriction on it. It can only be used for that purpose. And we cannot remove that restriction. We could condemn it. We have the authority of eminent domain. Any restriction that's placed, these, these very restrictions could be taken off with eminent domain. And we have that authority under, under law. Now, they may hang every one of us if we try to do that. But we have that authority and we have to be careful. You know, those are discussions that if you have a committee that you can talk about, maybe we need to form a foundation or another entity and let them own it where they're not subject to the same requirements we are. It accomplishes your goal because the, the property will be in the hands of a foundation or a third party entity that will take those restrictions and we can't condemn that. We can't remove them. They're not subject to the whim of future council and thereby give the citizens more ownership of it or at least a foundation or another entity. That's why those one and two are up there. But I think that those are decisions, while you're anxious to make this a reality tonight, I would caution you, let's not shoot ourselves in the foot. And because this is going to take some effort on y'all's part, it's going to take some effort on y'all's part. And it's going to take some effort from me. And so I want to make sure that we hit the mark on this because I don't want to mess it up for you or you. You know, this is too important to the community that we need to make sure that we do what it is they want you to do. And so I would recommend if, you know, as a show of good faith, you may want to consider doing the conservation easement. Just give you some warm and fuzzy and say, you've got to vote to take it off. And I assume if I put that on the agenda to take it off, there'll be three times as many people here in their order tonight. So. But I think you need to, you owe it to yourselves to make a rational, good decision with input from your citizens.
Yeah, I, I think the advice from the city attorney is to look at option number six as, as a motion and allow those individuals to come back and help us and assist with the city's attorney's advice and input. I see that Mr. Harvey has requested to speak and he hasn't spoken yet. Mr. Harvey, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I think I may have waited a moment or two, too late because my thinking was to give the land to the LAD Association and then have us and them come back as equal partners to talk about how the land would be developed. That was, that was my thinking, but I guess I waited a little bit too long and I apologize for that. And, and I, I say that because in, in listening to the various comments from residents here, I just sensed a lot of expertise that was shared in terms of being able to manage a nature preserve. So expertise that city staff doesn't have. So I was thinking to myself, they have the expertise, they have the passion, they have the commitment. And so why not give them an opportunity to working with us to take that blank canvas and, and make it something special. Which, which is, and I say equal partners because as was mentioned earlier by us, government moves slow. But if it's, if it's their property, then they can move as quickly as they feel like they need to, to move. So I guess you all listening to us, you've heard several, seven different opinions. So we've got to take these seven different opinions and kind of mesh it together in, in a way that will move us as a community forward. But my voice is to give it to the LAD property people. They seem to be best suited to me to take care of it.
Just a moment, please. Mr. McNabb, yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. City attorney, could, could you just help us provide something that we can go ahead and make a motion and in this line? Because I think we're all in the same direction.
Let me intervene just a moment. It's, it's, it may seem like we want to preclude this. Any further discussion, we don't. We, we have a, an emergency on a member of the city council who has to depart because of some extreme circumstances. So what I think the, the motion that we, we understand is coming. We would like to be able to get this motion and get it working and then we can continue some discussion. City attorney, is that acceptable? Is that acceptable to, to, as to the council? It's, we have someone who, there's an emergency, someone, one of the members of council must leave. And that individual would like to participate in the vote for basically number six, as I understand it.
Mayor, number six.
He's rolling number five.
It's actually, number six was a culmination of putting it into the community's hands to go through and look at each of these because I think each of you have given ideas. But the goal is, and as we mentioned, establishing a nonprofit. I understand there's a group, but there are things that have to happen so that this group can have it. And so by you guys taking this authority and giving it to the citizens based on you selecting someone, they would then bring this back to you, work with staff. We get them all the information, have our attorney on board. And then we can come back with something that's agreed upon, that's not just staff's thought, but what the community thinks together. And so that was what we were looking for with the committee. So that if you looked at these, if there's something you don't want on here, we would take it off, but allow the community to understand and come back in thirty days or however many days you want to bring back a recommendation to council that's not staff-based but also that's community-based.
Going off of Mr. Harvey's comments, is it, I'm thinking that in terms of looking at item number six, that it be modified to the extent, as Mr. Harvey was, was saying, to turn the membership, so to speak, of that committee, that commission, over to the you folks that have been active in this. Yes, we seven could select individuals that we would like to see on it, but you probably know your people better than we do. Mr. Harvey, am I, am I reading it so that we could, we can modify number six to take a motion to? We can nominate, but those would be only the seven initial people. And you folks, what do you call yourselves? At the LAD? That group. Allow that group, y'all get together and select some individuals to, to form your, your committee in addition to the seven that we would select to go along with you. How's that work? I mean, that puts, that, that kind of blends everything together. And it goes off what Mr. Kuntz was saying, that there's, there's a lot of education, there's a lot of knowledge sitting out there right now. And I think if we were only put seven on that, we'd be defeating the, the knowledge base that's possible to bring to this particular action.
We had thirteen. I just took it down from thirteen while we were standing here because I was worried it might have been too many, but that's perfect.
Okay, so.
Mayor.
Yes.
Our attorney has heard everything you've just said. Can we have him repeat it back in the form of a motion so we can move forward?
All right. I would, I would advise the city to make following motion, someone on the city council. Motion to establish a city committee with the mayor and council appointing one member. Each six members of the LAD Preservation Advocacy to join those seven members and to make a recommendation to the city council to utilize six oh nine West Daniel Dale Road being lot one of block A of the Walnut Ben addition. In addition to the city of Duncanville, Texas, to consider options one, two, three, four, five, and any other recommendations they would like to make concerning the Charles F. LAD property as described.
So moved.
Second. We have a move, a motion. We have a motion by Mr. McNabb. We have a second by Mayor Pro Tem Harvey. Please vote. Yeah, Mr. Lee, please. Once you decide who those individuals are going to be from your LAD, what was it, LAD advocacy?
LAD Preservation Advocacy.
That one, yeah, okay. By this coming Friday, by this coming Friday, if you would get your information to city manager Aretha Faro Benavides, that commission, committee, however it was, wishes to be composed and called, will be formed. And you are all going to be very active in how we proceed forward with this.
Mayor's housekeeping matter, do you want to bring back the council's nominees at your next meeting so they can get on with their business? Or do you, does it matter?
I think we can just get them to the city manager and she can communicate that to everybody involved. Okay, so we have a motion. It's been approved. And let's see. As a result of the executive session, there is no action to be taken. But there's a whole bunch of action to be taken on item number seven. So with that, the business of this city council meeting for the seventh of March, twenty twenty-two is, is completed. And we stand adjourned at eight thirty-seven.